Quiet, please. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. This is the public hearing of the Committee of the Whole regarding Bills Number 240966, 240967, 240968, 240969, 240970, 240971, 240972, and 240973. Before calling the roll, I'd like to announce that we have translation services available for anyone present at today's hearing. If needed, please go to the table to my left. Services are offered Mandarin and Cantonese. Mr. Christmas, will you please call the roll?
Councilman Swilla. Council Lady Gardier. Councilman Jones. Councilman Young. Councilman Driscoll. Council Lady Lazada. Council Lady Bass. Councilman Phillips. Councilman O'Neill. Council Lady Gilmore Richardson. Councilman Thomas. Councilman Harity. Council Lady Maude. Council Lady Landau. Council Lady Brooks. Councilman O'Rourke. Council President Johnson.
Thank you. The Court of Mother's Committee is present, and this hearing is now called to order. Mr. Crisp, will you please read the title of the bills?
Bill Number 240966, "To Grant the Necessary Authorizations for the City to Help Facilitate Development, Construction, and Operation of a New Arena for the Philadelphia 76ers Professional Basketball Team and for Other Uses, Including Authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property and Such Other City Officials as May Be Appropriate on Behalf of the City to Enter Into the Following Agreements and Take the Following Actions. Acquire Fee Simple Title to All or Portions of 1001 to 1025 Filbert Street, 1001 to 1019 Market Street, and 1025 Market Street Together the Market and Filbert Street Properties. Acquire Fee Simple Title to Other Parcels of Land, Aerial Areas, and Subsurface Areas in the Vicinity of the Market and Filbert Street Properties, including without limitation those areas reverting to the city or other parties in connection with the striking of certain aerial portions of 10th Street between Market Street and Filbert Street and certain other nearby parcels and areas. Enter into a Ground Lease Agreement with the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development under which the city would lease to pay all or portion of the Market Street and Filbert Street properties and the additional properties if any, and other parcels and subsurface areas the city now owns in the vicinity of those properties, all of which collectively would constitute the arena site. Join in or consent to a Sublease and Development Agreement between Pay and Other CBL Arena LLC and Entity Affiliated with the Philadelphia 76ers LP, or another entity affiliated with the 76ers under which ArenaCo or other 76er-related entity would sublease the arena site and cause an arena to be constructed on it, including a multi-purpose sports entertainment facility and ancillary accessory and related amenities, improvements, and infrastructure, and agree to other related conditions. Upon the expiration or termination of the sublease or other circumstances set forth in the sublease, convey fee simple title to the arena to pay for disposition to ArenaCo, grant, accept, amend, relocate, and extinguish easements, agreements, conditions, covenants, and restrictions encumbering or benefiting the arena site and any city-owned property adjacent to the arena site for the benefit of the arena site to facilitate construction and operation of the arena. Enter into a Direct Operating Covenant Agreement among the 76ers paid in the city under which the 76ers agree to play substantially all of their regular season and playoff games, playoff home games in the arena, and take all actions necessary and appropriate to accomplish the intent and purpose of this ordinance, all under certain terms and conditions. And Bill Number 240967, authorizing and approving the execution and delivery of a service agreement between the City of Philadelphia and the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development relating to the provision by the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development of certain project-related services to promote, among other things, the growth and expansion of business, commerce, and tourism within the City of Philadelphia in connection with the development of a multi-purpose sports and entertainment facility, including an arena to accommodate National Basketball Association games and family entertainment, community, retail, and other uses. Authorizing and approving the obligation of the City of Philadelphia to pay in full wind due the service fee and other amounts payable under the service agreement and covenanting to make necessary appropriations for such purpose, and authorizing city officials to take necessary or appropriate actions to accomplish the intent and purpose of the ordinance, all under certain terms and conditions. And Bill Number 240968, authorizing the revision of lines and grades on the portion of City Plan Number 307 by striking from the City Plan and vacating Filbert Street from 10th Street to 11th Street under certain terms and conditions. And Bill Number 240969, authorizing the revision of lines and grades on the portion of City Plan Number 307 by striking from the City Plan and vacating certain aerial portions of 10th Street between Market Street and Filbert Street under certain terms and conditions. And Bill Number 240970, authorizing CBL Arena LLC and its successors in interest to construct on and maintain various right-of-way encroachments in the vicinity of 100119 Market Street, 1025 Market Street, 1001 to 25 Filbert Street, Philadelphia, PA, under certain terms and conditions. And Bill Number 240971, amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Zoning and Planning" by amending certain definitions relating to signs, creating an arena area within the Center City Overlay District, and making related changes, including a master plan requirement and changes to accessory sign controls, all in connection with zoning rules for a proposed arena in Center City, and approving a master plan for the arena area, all under certain terms and conditions. And Bill Number 240972, amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Zoning and Planning" by revising certain provisions of Section 1496 entitled "Market Street East Sign Regulation," all under certain terms and conditions. And Bill Number 940973, approving the amendment of a Neighborhood Improvement District in the area generally bounded by and including 11th Street to the west, Filbert Street to the north, 8th Street to the east, and Market Street to the south, with the exception of certain condominium units at 801 Market Street condominium not included in the district, known as the Gallery Neighborhood Improvement District, to remove certain portions of such property generally bounded by Filbert Street on the north, 10th Street on the east, 11th Street on the west, and Market Street on the south, from such district in accordance with the provisions of the Community and Economic Improvement Act, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you very much. We want to thank everyone for coming to participate in public comment today as we discuss, considering the big proposal as before us. Today, we welcome all feedback, pro and con regarding this proposal. We just ask for a level of respect regarding public comments. Also working with us today is, to my left, the Department of Civil Affairs, our chef's department, and Philadelphia Finance, Philadelphia Police Department, as we operate and move through this process. The first gentleman we're going to ask to call up, Mr. John Christmas, please.
Mr. Sam Staton.
In the meanwhile, how's everybody doing today, all right? Good morning. How you doing today?
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, council members. My name is Sam Staton Jr., the vintage manager of Labor's Local 332, also international vice president for the Labor's International Union, North America, and Canada. I'm here today to testify about how important it is that we have this arena downtown. As you know, Local 332 is a construction union, that our membership depends on work. We all know about construction, that it's seasonal, it's not year-round. So anytime we get an opportunity to get our members to work, we are charged to do that. Our local union is unique because we probably is the only local that employs every nationality. We are proud of that. Our local was founded in the 1920s by African-American. It was chartered by an international in 1932. Since that time, it's only been eighth vintage manager. I'm the eighth vintage manager. We're proud of our heritage, and I understand Chinatown wanted to be proud of their heritage. When it comes down to survival and work, we depend on contractors that we have signed regulatory to give us decent benefit and wages. We fight for that. I was educated yesterday. I used to go to Chinatown quite a bit to eat, and when I was sitting in Chinatown eating, I would notice that I didn't see many people. I saw a lot of people who looked like me eating, but I didn't see a lot of people working. That kind of disturbed me to the bit that I stopped going to Chinatown. Yesterday, when a question was asked by one of the city council members about the employment, and the gentleman said, "We had 300 businesses in Chinatown, but they only employed three African-Americans." That was disturbing for me. And to know that city council and our mayor is trying to bring back Center City is a great thing, because like anyplace else, you need an anchor. You need an anchor. A mall don't survive without anchor stores in a mall. We talk about downtown, I remember the days, holidays, where every store had lights up. You could walk 20 blocks and see all shopping and stores. Things were lively, people was enjoying themselves. That hasn't happened here in Philadelphia in over 20 years. Where you go downtown at Christmas time, it's dead. Vacant buildings is all you see. This arena will bring back businesses, especially minority businesses. You talk about minority business chasing a dream. You talk to minority contractors chasing a dream, be a part of this stadium. It is so, so important. When it's all said and done, Chinatown can go back and be in Chinatown, but it don't change the makeup of downtown if it's not done. Still going to have boarded-up stores, people waiting for an opportunity. We must make this arena happen. So many people depend on this arena happening. I recall, in my younger days, the downtown that I remember, we had so many options, movies, shopping. They don't exist now. Why? Because we have to do better. We have to do better. This is not about Chinatown, this is about the City of Philadelphia. We hear our mayor talk about one United City, we must make this stadium happen. So I'm calling on city council to make sure that it happened, not just for my membership, but you talk about the jobs that it's going to create in the retail, the new business owners that they're going to create with these properties that now boarded up and vacant. So again, I stress upon the council to pass the bills. Thank you.
Sam, before I turn it over to my members, we just want to publicly just thank you and acknowledge you for the work that you do representing Labor's District Council 332, but most importantly, carrying on the life and legacy of Sam Staton Senior. And so you're always in the community, you're always talking about economic development, and most importantly, making sure we're putting our best foot forward to advocate for those most in need when it comes to addressing that issue of poverty here in the great City of Philadelphia. The chair recognizes Councilman Jim Harity.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Mr. Staton, for coming in today and taking your time. I know you're a busy guy. What can you tell me about what this job will do for members of all the unions? This is going to be a five-year job, right? Those of us who've worked in the industry know that once you get a little bit of gray hair on your head or in your beard, it gets harder and harder to become a steady person. This job will not only create jobs, but this will also allow our members to retire off of this job, correct?
Yes, I mean, this is huge because we're a great proponent of apprenticeship, so it's not just our members. We're talking about the future. Like, every union is not going to survive unless you have people come behind you to maintain it. We've been around since the 1920s, and we didn't stay around just because we were there. There was members to keep the work going and keep the work going. So when you talk about construction, like I say again, it's seasonal, but you're also changing lives in every kind of area, whether it be our membership, be apprentices, people turning citizens from prison. There's so many opportunities here that we talking about. Like I say, Chinatown is going to go back to Chinatown, be in Chinatown when it's all said and done, but the city still got to find jobs for people to be able to pay taxes and people to support their families, and this is what this kind of work does for us in construction. The other piece of that is, this is why you have union contractors, because there's definitely a difference between union and non-union in the building. When you build union, you're safe. You know you can walk through a building and it don't cave in. We had this issue some years ago where people got killed at 20th and Market because we had a non-union contractor trying to do some work that he wasn't qualified to do, and people died. This is why you depend on union, because we are first class. Yesterday, if you heard Mr. Boyer say, "We spend $48 million a year in training." That's huge, because when you put people's life on the line, you want to have the best. We have a training center right on Broad Street that we built, brand-new, four, three or four years ago, because we want to train the best. We want to be prepared for when contractors come to do this work, we send them the best that we have, because we know how dangerous their work is. And plus, we want people to have careers. I was just at our training school last night, we had 35 new people that I spoke to. Some of them came from prison. It doesn't matter for us. We don't look at people and where they come from. We look at what their future and where they want to go. That's what matters.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you very much for your testimony.
Yeah, thank you.
So we're in a public comment phase, and we're going to call up individuals who signed up for public comment.
Would Mr. Paul Scott Heaton, Ms. Lynn Major, Mr. Dave Keew, Sun Chi Bolz, and Gina Chang, please come forward.
Say the names again.
Ms. Lynn, oh, Mr. Paul Heaton, Ms. Lynn Major, Dave Keew, and Sun Chi Bolz.
How you doing, ma'am? Just state your name.
Darlene Olson.
We didn't call you yet, just one second, ma'am.
Again, I called Paul Scott Heaton, Lynn Major, Dave Keew, and Sun Chi Bolz.
Darlene, go ahead. State your name and begin your testimony.
Those of us who are 65 and up and came here for a good retirement life have not been considered as stakeholder group, but we must not be ignored. We make up over 30% of residents in the tourist part of the city, both east and west abroad. We spend our retirement money here, in the city. We came here because of access to good medical care, theaters, dining. We came here to stay here, feeling confident that when the time came, we could get around safely with canes, walkers, and wheelchairs. I have made friends through social groups, like Friends of the City and the Transition Network, and that's how I can speak for others my age. For over a year now, I have been organizing lunches in restaurants within the Chinatown neighborhood. We've enjoyed over two dozen restaurants so far, and there is always a wait list to my lunch events. I ask them, "What brought you to Philly?" Like me, many of us do not drive and are reliant on walking and public transportation. I am reliant on SEPTA 45 bus, a half-block from my house in South Philly. I use SEPTA bus and subway to get to my doctors here in Center City. I use SEPTA bus and subway to get to theaters, social events, to get to Amtrak and the airport. None of us have been consulted on the proposed Community Benefits Agreement, or CBA, which would earmark $50 million for initiatives, both citywide and for neighborhoods closest to the arena. Critics have pointed out that community stakeholders were not involved in drafting the CPA. It would have been easy to get our feedback, just go to the Kennedy House or William Just go to the Kennedy House or William Penn House West Abroad or the Hopkins House or Independence Place in Washington Square West. That's full of us. Vision Zero. I've heard no mention of this during the past two years of discussions about this proposed arena. I've heard no mention of this. I read in there, it says, complete streets projects help us work towards achieving zero vision. Vision Zero, a collaborative citywide effort to eliminate traffic deaths and serious injuries on streets. Just go to visionzerofila.com. Regarding SEPTA, I think, I thank you, Councilman, Councilmember Cindy Bass. I thank you for raising the concern about SEPTA. And that was just last week. And I read that you explained that you met with SEPTA officials. And I read the quote, SEPTA is saying that they're not paying for these costs. So who is? Thank you, Councilman Isaiah Thomas for asking about the CBA. So I'm almost finished. I particularly am addressing six of you, the six of you that are on the Public Health Committee. Councilmembers Nina Ahmad, Quetzin Lazada, Isaiah Thomas, Mike Driscoll, Cindy Bass and Rue Landa. I say to you, please listen to what the former Health Commissioner of Philadelphia said recently, plus the more than 3,000 doctors of Physicians for Social Responsibility. And please listen to those brave doctors, EMTs, ER techs and medical workers who have put their names in support of No Arena Jeff Med. This, despite the lip service of Jefferson CEO who has only been in his job two years, that he said he thought they could coexist with each other.
It's time, ma'am.
One more.
You're my eldest, so I don't want no smoke. I don't want no trouble. Thank you for your, for your testimony, ma'am. State your name for the record, please.
Good morning. Buenos dias, Philadelphia. My name is Lynn Major. A little nervous here. This is the first time I've ever spoken in these chambers, but maybe not last. I live in West Philly. I'm a constituent of Councilmember Galtier. Speaking about Bill 240966. I really appreciate this opportunity to speak. I'm an educator and a musician and the proud parent of two recent School District of Philadelphia high school graduates just down the road from here. Like me, they also relied on SEPTA. We need SEPTA. We need SEPTA to function, keep functioning. I'm coming at this issue from the perspective of being, as you can see, a Sixers fan, so you know, there's that. For better or for worse. The Sixers should stay where they are in South Philly. That's where they belong. I'm also a longtime basketball player myself. Aside from having been an involved parent in the school district, I've also been a tutor in Philly Public Schools. I've gotten to know quite a number of students and their families and can really see what's at stake. I've been a resident of Philadelphia voting and taxpaying for a great many years now. A lady never tells her age, but I'm getting up there. So yeah, I got skin in the game here. Why do I strongly oppose this 76 place idea to be built at the proposed site? So many reasons, many of which have already been very clearly stated. I'm going to just give some historical perspective, thinking in terms of half-century milestones. That's not my time, is it? Oh, okay. 1976, I remember the bicentennial. We're coming up on 2026, the semi-quinsentennial celebration. It is a great opportunity to feel civic pride. 2076, would 76 place even still be standing? Questionable. Think we can figure this one out. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Major.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Dave Q. Before I read my written remarks, I'll just note, I was a sports writer for the Philadelphia Citizen in 2020 and 2021. I wrote about why us Eagles fans hate the Dallas Cowboys so much. But I also wrote about, you know, the Sixers ownership during the pandemic. They were the first and last basketball team to ask its office employees to take a pay cut to endure the pandemic. So I'm a little biased, I'll admit. You know, I don't think they'd be good employers. I don't think they'd be good community partners. So, good morning again. My name is Dave Q. I'm here to talk about process today. I'm the Executive Director of Asian Arts Initiative, where I've had the privilege of working with Chin, in Chinatown for the last 15 years. I was also once a city employee, working in the Office of Arts and Culture in the Nutter Administration. So council members know this as well as I do, that the civil servants that make up our city are tirelessly dedicated to fair process and a government that serves the people of Philadelphia. Chinatown has been asking to be at the table for our voices to be heard since day one of this arena proposal. Instead, this mayor has applied the full weight of her authority against the door to keep us out so she could sell out the people of Philadelphia to the developers behind closed doors. This process has been shameful and disrespectful to the 69% of Philadelphians who oppose the arena, not only to those people, but to all Philadelphians who have had no chance to weigh in on this process, on the whole negotiation for the last two and a half years when we've known about this proposal. We've had no opportunity for this hearing, finally, to have any discussion, public discussion about the arena. But it's not too late. This is not a done deal. We invite council to remember your values as civic servants and vote no on this shameful process. We must tell the mayor that this process is not the standard that we should be setting for the rest of her administration. Just a few weeks for council to consider this proposal and this negotiation. To consider such a major proposal is not nearly enough time. If she thinks this is a good idea, then bring council to the negotiating table. Bring the community, bring the press, bring the unions. What does she have to hide? We know a rush job when we see one, and we, the people of Philadelphia, ask our government to serve the people, not the billionaires. We do not trust this process. And the only conscientible vote for council to make on this process is no. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. State your name for the record and begin, please.
Good morning. My name is Sun He Vols, and I'm the Environmental Justice Program Manager with the Asian American Community Fund of Pennsylvania. I grew up in Council District 10. I've lived in the city most of my life, and I'm here to voice my strong opposition to this package of bills. The arena project poses a threat to environmental health and public well-being in Center City and surrounding communities that the impact studies have not even considered. Air pollution is the biggest threat to public health for people in urban areas, and Philadelphia regularly has some of the worst air pollution in the country. Philadelphia's concentrations of particulate matter 2.5 are three times higher than the Pennsylvania average, and downtown Philly has one of the most polluted census tracts in the city, in the region, I'm sorry. The 19107 zip code has the worst particulate matter exposure in the city. Anyone who lives, works, shops or hangs out in Center City is exposed to this pollution. Children, the elderly and people with pre-existing respiratory issues are particularly at risk. And even short-term exposure to particulate matter can cause health impacts and worsen existing conditions. Exposure to particulate matter pollution can raise a person's risk of asthma attacks, heart attacks, and diesel particulate matter from trucks has been linked to lung cancer. Particulate matter 2.5 is so small that it enters the bloodstream and vital organs. The biggest source of air pollution in the city is transportation. A recent study showed Philadelphia has the fourth most congested roads in the country. Chinatown is a neighborhood with little tree cover, no public green space, and is divided by the Vine Street Expressway. Every stage of demolition, construction and operation of the arena will produce more air pollution. Why build an arena here in this spot that only worsens air pollution for an historically overburdened community? The people of Pennsylvania have a constitutional right to clean air that is not being valued here. Why is there not a comprehensive plan for development that gets us to the city's climate goals that provides jobs on projects that create sustainable communities and a sustainable environment and not billionaire interests? Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name's Gina Chang. I live in Old Kensington, and I oppose this bill. You might have seen my five-month-old trying to join the testimony. I'm also a mom of a three-year-old who's in pre-K. And in just one month, five of his classmates were sent to the ER because our rec center's playground is literally falling apart. We were promised renovations around this time, actually. But instead, the city just slapped some construction tape up around the most dangerous areas. No renovations. We're told not enough money. I take my kids to a nearby library, actually in Council Squillers District. And this week, it closed indefinitely. The heater broke and the librarian said that the contractor came, but he won't fix it. Apparently, the city still owes this contractor $400,000 in previous HVAC bills. Again, we're told not enough money. Well, to the billionaires who want a $400 million tax-freebie, it's time they're told not enough money. That's money that we need to keep our schools from shutting down, our libraries warm this winter, and our rec centers safe. For years, the city has told residents to make do, get scrappy, stretch every dollar. Meanwhile, this pilot hemorrhages out money, millions of dollars, on the backs of residents who actually pay their taxes. Why waive a $400 million bill for some billionaires when the city can't even pay its own $400,000 bill to keep its library open? Council members, this math does not add up. And to Councilmember Lazada, my council member, throughout your career, your heart has been for the many immigrant families in our district. I urge you to protect the district's seven families from being short-changed and strong-armed by this bad arena deal. Thank you.
Good morning, Council. My name is Shirley Young. I am a resident of Philadelphia born and raised. I am the president of the Hinwaiyan Homeowners Association that consists of 51 homeowners in Chinatown. A unique housing complex that has common area and we make it work and it's great. I am a member of the Chinatown Neighborhood Advisory Committee. So as a resident homeowner, I am against this arena. Ever since two years ago, none of the talks has involved homeowners and the businesses in Chinatown, and it affects it. Someone made the case about, well, the arena is not in Chinatown. It's bordering right there. Market East Gallery was bordering. It impacts Chinatown. You cannot say it doesn't impact Chinatown. We, Chinatown has been here for over 150 years. We are a thriving community of homeowners, small businesses, residents, and it's not even just that. We have relatives, friends, neighbors that come to Chinatown to take care, to shop, to take care of people. So the traffic definitely is always a main concern. They're doing the Chinatown Stitch to repair the damage that the Vine Street Expressway has done to Chinatown. The arena will not benefit Chinatown. It will decimate Chinatown. There's proof of that in cities that have arenas where Chinatown was there. Chinatown is decimated after that. So if you vote yes on here, just have the knowledge that you will be signing the death knell for Chinatown, for Philadelphia, and that will be your legacy. The money, the arena is not the only option for marketeese. There are other options. So please, I beg you, that just because they're throwing money at you right now, that should not be a consideration. Chinatown matters. We count on you as city council to make a choice because Chinatown is part of Philadelphia. Our neighborhoods are very important to Philadelphia. We're not against the union and the jobs and the 76ers, but we want to survive and we want to live and we want to contribute, and we do. As taxpayers, businesses, homeowners, we're unique. So, you know, so much more to say. The process that has, I felt, has been shoveled and jammed down our throats, Chinatown community, is horrible. There's no consideration. I feel like it's a rough job. SEPTA is not even going to support it. So the changes that they have, one of my concerns is, we have senior citizens living in Chinatown, but we also have senior citizens living in other parts of the city that take the bus routes. And all that will change and that impacts indirectly. All right? So the one area of arena impacts everybody's lives. And you can't ignore that. You have to pay attention about all of that. It's not just the money and PAC agreement. They're not, the owners are not paying enough money to Philadelphia for having the arena there. So please, vote no, city council.
Would Calvin Williams, Deborah Codish, Derek Schwartz and Reverend Gregory Holston, please come forward? You will each have two minutes to make your remarks. Again, Mr. Calvin Williams, Deborah Codish, Derek Schwartz and Reverend Gregory Holston.
My name is Deborah Codish. I am founder and longtime director of the Philadelphia Folklore Project and a co-founder of the Folk Arts Cultural Treasures Charter School in Chinatown. I am here to speak against Bill 240966 and to ask you to vote no on this harmful arena legislation. Philly is known as the poorest big city in the country, but Philly is one of the richest cities on the planet if we count social movements, arts and culture, people, heart. This is a place of huge cultural, social, intellectual and spiritual wealth. I have spent decades in collaboration with community accountable visionaries and institution builders, artists, dancers, musicians, cultural workers in Chinatown and across the city. We are truly wealthy in our people. And I am simply here to remind us that Philadelphia Chinatown, 150 years old, richly diverse and growing, is a national, even international, cultural treasure. We should act like it. We should hold on to our precious places. The harms of this proposed arena- The harms of this proposed arena cannot be mitigated and are underestimated. I am part of No Arena in Chinatown solidarity, thousands of us now from all over Philadelphia who have taken some kind of action to tell you repeatedly over the last two years why this is an extremely bad idea. We started organizing because some of us directly experienced what David Adelman and others did to West Philadelphia. We don't want to see more sacrifice zones or sacrifice people. We need community-driven development, not the bad ideas of three billionaires motivated by profit and not the public good. Listen to the people, be our people's champions, and thank you to those of you who have stood up against this steamroller. I am asking you all to protect what is priceless, vote no on arena legislation. History will remember your actions, and so will we. Thank you.
My name is Derek Schwartz. I live in District Seven. There are so many reasons why I oppose this arena, but today I want to speak from my perspective as somebody living with a chronic illness. My long-term health is reliant on having immediate and dependable medical care. And when I'm rushing to the hospital, I don't have the time or the energy to cross-reference the 76ers' schedule, much less to sit in gridlocked traffic for 45 minutes. Something that I really value about living in Philadelphia is the great medical infrastructure that we have here, and this legislation scares me because I feel like the access to care that I rely on is being bought and sold to the Sixers in a deal that does nothing for the people of Philadelphia. Jefferson Hospital is the only Level One Trauma Center in Center City, and if that is no longer accessible, then for many of us, there will be nowhere left to go, and that will inevitably result in avoidable deaths. This bill is threatening the safety of chronically ill people, disabled people, elderly people, and anybody living with serious medical conditions. And of course, medical emergencies happen to everybody, so if this arena is built, we will all be less safe. The 76ers aren't spending any money to meaningfully address the gridlock that this arena would inevitably cause and have shown that they care more about lining their pockets than they do about our lives. Instead of supporting this arena, I want to see city resources going to support the workers and infrastructure of our already strained SEPTA system, to schools, and to the city services that we actually need. With this vote, City Council has the opportunity to prioritize the safety of Philadelphia residents over the interests of billionaires. I'm begging you to please stand with the people. Thank you.
Would Lillian Z, Jamie Luck, Kelly Lamb, and Elizabeth Williams please come forward? You will each have two minutes each to speak. Please state your name for the record and begin with your testimony.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Lily Shay, and I live in District Seven. I am here today because I strongly oppose this bill. I'm an urban planner by training, and I've witnessed large-scale development projects in a number of cities. This arena is one of the most destructive proposed projects that I have seen. I want to speak on the so-called Community Benefits Agreement. I've seen a lot of CBAs in my time, and I can confidently tell you that this CBA is a joke. It's an embarrassment, and it makes a mockery of what public process is supposed to look like. No money for SEPTA, no money for city infrastructure, 1.6 million split between 600 Chinatown businesses, which is basically $37 per month per business. On top of that, no input from any community organizations. This is the type of CBA that, as a city planner, I would use as an example of what not to accept. At the end of the day, no CBA would be enough by itself to counter the sheer size and impact of this development and its proximity to vulnerable neighborhoods like Chinatown. As planners, we know that real protection for communities is rooted in development strategies and policies that stabilize and protect neighborhoods for years to come, not just throwing money at people for a few years and hoping that that wins their approval. What we really need are improvements to basic city services, which, again, the Sixers are not putting a dollar towards. Our schools need funding, our transit system needs upgrades, people need dignified jobs with decent wages, including the city's own staff, who are currently threatening to go on strike. This resolution is asking the people of Philadelphia, many of whom are struggling to afford basic things like rent and childcare, to foot the bill for an arena whose main purpose is to line the pockets of the ultra wealthy. This is not good development. This is not good city planning. This is exploitation. I urge you to reject this proposal. Thank you.
My name is Elizabeth Williams. I live in the Gabor Hood with my wife, Molly Fourlines, who is a doctor at Jefferson Einstein Hospital. I'm speaking on behalf of Molly today because she is unable to attend any of the hearings due to staffing shortages at the hospital. I read the 195-page Lung and Traffic Impact Study, which compared three facilities in New York and two in San Francisco. This obviously skews the numbers to look more like New York. We are not like New York. New York has 45% car ownership. Philly and San Francisco both have 70%. I've been in SF on game day. I waited 40 minutes to move three blocks. I thought there must be an accident up ahead. I was told, no, this is game day. More alarmingly, the study does not include any streets south of Market. It only looks north up to Cuthbert. There are, sorry, Calhoun. The arena will impact traffic all around it, not only on one side. Additionally, the proposed ride-share drop-off and pickup points require cars to cross Market Street, so in order to access or depart. So, obviously, traffic south of Market will be impacted, and gridlock is going to happen. I'd like to keep in mind a group that hasn't been mentioned during these discussions, expecting mothers and newborn babies. Molly was born premature, and her lungs were underdeveloped. With now a neonatal intensive care unit in NICU, she would have suffocated and died. As you know, Center City's only Level One Trauma Center is in the area that will be impacted by gridlock, but so is Pennsylvania Hospital, home to the largest NICU in the region. The only two hospitals with NICUs that are south of Temple University are in the impacted area. This can be the difference for high-risk pregnancies between life and death for both mother and child. You don't choose when you go into labor, and you can't schedule it around arena events. I've heard lots of testimony about the ways that the arena will benefit the Black community, but this is one area where the Black community is disproportionately negatively impacted. According to the American College of Obstetrics and Gynecology, rates of maternal mortality are three to four times higher for Black mothers. In Molly's experience, serving a primarily Black population, the majority of her patients are high-risk. These are our most vulnerable new mothers at the most vulnerable moments of their lives. There are a lot of complexities impacting their outcomes, but I ask you, are you willing to make it worse? Pennsylvania Hospital delivers 5,000 babies annually, 13 to 14 a day. That's over 50% chance during any given hour that a mother is giving birth. By voting yes to this bill, you're saying that their lives are expendable, and you are willing to take them as collateral damage. What will you say to a mother who gives birth in the backseat during standstill traffic and loses her baby to prevent any of the thousands preventable things that can go wrong during childbirth? Will you say, I knew this was a possibility, and I chose to accept that and worsen your odds? Thank you.
Good morning, members of Council. My name is Jamie Luck, and I'm here with the No Arena in Chinatown Solidarity Organization. Today, I have the privilege to read a statement that was prepared by 105 businesses and organizations within Chinatown. To all members of City Council, on behalf of the 105 undersigned organizations representing the voices, residents, and businesses of Chinatown and the vicinity, we, the undersigned, issue a clear statement opposing the proposed Community Benefits Agreement and request City Council and Councilmember Mark Squiller to delay the legislative timeline. A Community Benefits Agreement must be negotiated with the impacted community. The proposed CBA never included the concerns of residents, businesses, and civic organizations whose lives and livelihoods will be directly and immediately impacted by the proposed legislation. Our exclusion from this process is unacceptable. The proposed CBA fails to address the following core issues: Less than 10% of the $50 million within the CBA will go towards Chinatown, despite it being the most impacted community. This money is less than half of 1% of the value of the project, an amount that is inadequate for the anticipated rise in rent and housing costs, small business displacement and job losses, traffic and construction nightmares, and impacts on Chinatown's basic livability. Second, no money is allocated for housing and rent relief, and no money for housing and rent relief is directed towards Chinatown and impacted businesses in the area. The Community Impact Study reported that more than half of the 600 businesses in Chinatown would suffer as a result of the arena. Yet, the funding allocated via the CBA wouldn't even cover the cost of a single day of work for a typical business. As Lily noted earlier, this works out to about $37 per month per business for the six years of construction nightmares. The CBA also allocates a paltry $3 million to a small lending program that doesn't start until 2032, well after construction is completed. This also amounts to $166 per business per year. Most of the funds won't start for years, and there are no protections for Chinatown or any other neighborhood if the Sixers fail to live up to their agreement or turn out to be poor managers of this project. The mayor's administration refused multiple requests for meetings throughout the 2024 calendar year, failing to provide even basic updates to concerned Chinatown residents. No materials have been made available in Chinese, violating the language access mandate of the city. Thank you.
I'm Kelly Lamb. I reside in West Philadelphia, and I also organize with the No Arena in the Heart of Our City Coalition, and I will be continuing Jamie's testimony on behalf of businesses and residents in Chinatown. Community residents of impacted areas deserve a fair and inclusive process, no matter where we live. We ask Council to respect the voices of our neighborhood and slow down the legislative process until such time as community voices are adequately included and our concerns are appropriately addressed. Signed, over 100 organizations, Pennsylvania United Chinese Coalition, Chinese Restaurant Association of Greater Philadelphia, Philadelphia Ho-U Chinese American Association, Ho-U Chinese Folk Culture Center, Philadelphia Mazi Culture Exchange Association, Greater Philadelphia United Chinese American Chamber of Commerce, Concerned Citizens of Chinatown, Guangxi Association of Pennsylvania, Greater Philadelphia Lanjiang Association, Chinese Northeast Association of USA, Greater Philadelphia Fujian Association, Philadelphia Chinese Opera Society, Southern Fujin East Friendship Association of USA, Philadelphia Overseas Chinese Culture Exchange Association, Pennsylvania Fujian Chamber of Commerce, USA, North American Putin Association, ANC Association, Philadelphia Incorporated, International Straight Cultural Exchange Association, Philadelphia Sisters Dance Group, the Pennsylvania Chinese Businesses Association, the Pennsylvania Sichuan Association, World Sun Yat-Sen Foundation, Cross Street Peaceful Development Forum, St. Joseph University Chinese Cultural Center, Pennsylvania United Chinese Chamber of Commerce, Philadelphia Taiwan Association, Greater Philadelphia Shangxi Association, Asian American Fellowship, Pennsylvania, Cast Philadelphia, American Fujian Minghua Chamber of Commerce, Greater Philadelphia Indonesian Chinese American Association, Asian Americans United, Folk Arts Cultural Treasures Charter School, Asian Arts Initiative, Philadelphia Chinatown Dragon Boat Team, Philadelphia Suns, Asian Pacific Islander Philical Alliance, Ginger Arts Center, Students for the Preservation of Chinatown, Students Against the Sixers Arena, Changli Association of Philadelphia, Chinese Christian Church and Center, Little Saigon Cafe, Tuk Heng Grocery, Jiang's Hair Salon, Beijing Duck Seafood Restaurant, Laos Samu V Muyang Gong Si, Mr. Noodle, AM Hair Salon, Breadtop House, Tees Roach, Nui See Cow, Spicy Sha Shan Delicacies, MBL Burger, Lonzo Hand-Pulled Noodles, Shing Tea 79, Bubble Fish, Room 209, Moore Sugar, Brew Beer and Beverage, Rainbow Hair Salon, Four Seasons Seafood LLC, Jing Hui Chang Trading Incorporated, New Hong Kong Bakery, Ocean Harbor Restaurant, Tian Hong Video Corp., Xiumiao Dao Yunan Rice Noodle, Thai Lake Seafood Restaurant, Asia Bakery, Lee Ho Fook, Little Seven House, Arch Pharmacy, Designer Eyes, Jaden Art Gift Shop, BB Bubble Tea, Jiangnan Philadelphia, and Style Studios, ZM Express, IP Novelty Inc., Obisu Japanese Lifestyle, Mo Chi Nut Hay Yogurt, Nonzo Hand-Drawn Noodle House Incorporated, China King Happy DIY, Huge Family Store, Super Accu Care, Wayne Key Hardware and Kitchen Supplies, Inc., Chinatown Dollar &amp; Up, Dragon Spa, Central City Eye Care, K&amp;A Gift Shop, Hung Fat Chuen, Sweet House Banana Leaf, Malaysian Cuisine, Drip, Vietnamese Cafe, E-Pro Associate, Inc., GVE Tron Philly, PC First Realty, Inc., Eagle Hair Styling Salon, E-Me Restaurant, Long Life Chinese Herbs Incorporated, Ninjing Restaurant, Love Noodles Restaurant, and QT Sandwiches. Thank you, City Council.
Would James Schroeder, Fern Lee Hagadorn, Maria Camilleri, and Michael McGedigan please come forward? You will each have two minutes to speak. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Jim. I've lived in Philadelphia for 15 years. This is my first time testifying, if it's any measure of the interest of the community in this process. I know there are many of us who it's our first time and who are here, I'll say, on our own time. I've lived in West Philadelphia for 15 years. Why does someone in West Philadelphia have such concern about this arena? Well, it could be Chinatown, it's the Gabor Hood, it's Washington Square West who face the impact of billionaire developers this time, but it will be my neighborhood next time, or rather, it has already been my neighborhood. In fact, as a member of Power Interfaith, I've met with neighbors all over the city and seen that every one of our neighborhoods is struggling to navigate the consequences of billionaire developers and billionaire institutions, whether it's the arena, the plans of universities for West Philadelphia, the concerns around Germantown High School redevelopment, or Logan Triangle. So, I'm here today to ask Council to recognize that it isn't just this development or these three neighborhoods. Rather, this is a moment to stand collectively, to set a new standard for what it looks like for great businesses to do business in partnership with Philadelphia. Here's what I mean. I've been pleased since the beginning to hear that leaders in Council and the administration clearly state the city will not provide funding to billionaires seeking to make a few billion more. Seemed like a basic baseline expectation. Unfortunately, now that we see the bills in front of us, we find that standard has lowered. You may have different words for it here in Council, but as a constituent, when I hear about a scheme to donate land and lease it back in order to avoid paying 400 million, maybe 600 million in property taxes, I call that a public subsidy. I'm a homeowner. You might say here that you haven't raised taxes in the past few years, but I'm paying 60% more in property taxes to the city than I did three years ago. If I can, and indeed, I have to, then the billionaires can also. If their business plan does not have the margin for them to pay their share in taxes, then it isn't a very good business plan. If their business plan does not have the margin for them to pay for increased public services that they will require, transit, security, safety, then it isn't a very good business plan. If this is the best deal the city has ever seen, then it is time for this City Council to raise the standard. Billionaires should come here to do business, not in the city, but in partnership with the city. Council should raise the expectation. We welcome businesses that partner with Philadelphia. We do not welcome billionaires who can only make their billions more by avoiding paying their taxes and by not contributing to the schools and shared infrastructure of the city. The rest of us do our part. The billionaires should do theirs. Vote no.
Good morning. My name is Fern Lee Hagadorn. I live in South Philadelphia, in District Two, Council President Johnson's district. And before I say anything, I want to thank those council members who are here, because I see there are some empty seats. I am speaking on Bill 240966. I oppose the building of the 76ers' arena in its proposed location. I grew up in Chinatown in New York City. 71 years later, those formative years helped shape who I am today. Thankfully, there is a Chinatown here for young people, and I hope that Chinatown will be here for years to come. But imagine what this project will do to Chinatown. In its proposed location, the arena project is not for the common good. The developers talk about minimal disruption in trying to assure us that construction will only- that construction will only be a temporary inconvenience. But who are they kidding? This is not just disruption. This is not just construction. This is destruction. Breaking ground is not a one-day job. For days on end, there will be constant sounds of bulldozers, dump trucks, smashing concrete, loud drilling. Exhaust and dirt will fill the air and land on cars and windows. Children will slip in the mud as water lines are replaced. The elderly will not be able to safely cross a street. Construction will go on, not for a month, but for six years, from early morning into the evening. Is this a livable environment? As a result, daily life will be hell. Chinatown will become a dug-up neighborhood. People will avoid going there. The construction will drive residents out and bring in other forces to build market-rate condominiums. The destruction will be long-term and may be permanent. Six years can mean a slow death for Chinatown. It happened in Washington, DC. The permanent destruction of Chinatown will happen if this project is approved. You, City Council, have the power to put a stop to the destruction of Chinatown. Do not be destroyers of Chinatown. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Maria Camilleri, and I live in Council District 3. I oppose Bill Number 240966. Thank you to all of the council members who are asking tough questions of Mayor Parker and of the three billionaires who did not even show up to the hearings for the project that they're trying to fast-track. I'm a public school parent with a child in 4th grade at Folk Arts Cultural Treasures School, also known as FACS, in Chinatown. We live in West Philly, and we love our neighborhood. But my partner and I, both from mixed-race immigrant families, have felt at home in Chinatown for 20-plus years. FACS is a unique, diverse, inclusive community that values identity, language, and culture of origin. Families are actively involved in their children's education, and the school nurtures academic excellence alongside social justice, empathy, and anti-racism. Folk arts are woven into the curriculum, and creativity is essential to learning. FACS is in a vibrant, resilient neighborhood with 150 years of history, full of small businesses that our family supports frequently. I worry about the impact of six years of arena demolition and construction on this community. When I walk from the L to FACS, I see the harm that the Vine Street Expressway and Convention Center inflicted on Chinatown, replacing hundreds of homes and small businesses with dangerous intersections, shadowy tunnels, and empty storefronts. This neighborhood does not need another massive building that sits empty most of the time. My child will graduate 8th grade at FACS before the arena is scheduled to be completed. That's four years of breathing in construction-related pollution and navigating disruptions to public transit. I've lived in West Philly long enough to remember how the L construction devastated 52nd Street, and I fear Chinatown could suffer a similar fate. Every child deserves to go to a safe, clean school and get a quality education, regardless of zip code. Sadly, thousands of Philadelphia families are deprived of a school experience that they love, forced to send their kids to crumbling, unhealthy buildings. The school district is again warning of school closures, reopening wounds from the 2013 closings. The city is dedicating less time to the school closure hearings than an arena that 78% of Philadelphians think should not be a priority for council. It is unacceptable that City Council has cleared schedule for 40 hours of hearings on the vanity project of three billionaires who don't live in the city and have a proven track record of broken promises and predatory development. City Council, I urge you, keep doing your research, keep asking these hard questions, and don't rush this legislation. Don't give these billionaires what amounts to a $1 billion tax break when our public schools and public transit are in crisis. Please vote no on this bill. Thank you.
Hello. Yeah, my name is Michael McGeadigan. I sell and repair bicycles in Philadelphia. My son went to Philly Public Schools, and in three years, if all works well, he'll be an MD. On November 5th, a little more recently, we saw what happens when oligarchs get their way. Recently, an oligarch just outside Philadelphia cried out, "I want to control my own destiny because my team's lease, which I signed off on, doesn't allow us to make a second billion dollars quickly enough." Accordingly, for my corporation's benefits, I require the mayor of Philadelphia and City Council to foreclose on the destinies of Philadelphia's business owners, residents, workers, as well as patients and staff at nearby hospitals. Oh, don't forget SEPTA passengers, Market East, Wash West in the Gaberhood, and the majority of Philadelphians who oppose tax dollars and city property going to my currently 2-11 basketball team project. That's a lot of destinies to put a smile on an oligarch's face just as long as that property makes him happy, and then he'll need a more expensive stadium. That seems to happen. We older folks have lived through half a dozen Philly mayors who failed to even whisper about a real plan for the space between City Hall and the Delaware or ask the community what that plan should look like and why there are so many empty parking lots to Disney Hole, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Those are owned by oligarchs who just are like, "Well, it's not a rich enough payday. Let's keep it surface parking." That's why Market Street's got a problem. As one of the first-planned cities in America, Philly must not let a couple of squabbling billionaires to take a Sharpie to our plans for Market East, for Chinatown, for the historic district, for Wash West. How do stadium deals work out in other big cities? The answer to that is clear. Not one reputable study has found pro-sports facilities to be a valid economic strategy. Everybody on City Council knows that. The mayors knows that. The studies say it. Taxpayers always end up taking a loss. Before an oligarch got upset with how fast he was getting to his second billion dollars, there were real plans for Market East. Let's foreground them at a special four-day session of City Council. Instead of doing damage control for an oligarch's vape dream, the 76 place... The last part of this is division. The 76 place debate is already damaging our society. Its backers have worked really hard to declare Chinatown is the only problem, and we'll pay them off with some community benefits bucks. We just have to figure out what we can buy them for. At the same time, they are widening and exploiting an existing division between Philadelphia's Black and Asian communities. That is a cost the studies haven't mentioned, and the studies cannot quantify. And that's something that has to be solved in this century before we build a basketball stadium. 76 Place is dividing our urbanists between those who feel that we should take whatever a developer gives us and be grateful for it, and those who say true expert planning that raises all boats is what we should see. And we are already seeing that on Market East. You look on the south side of Market Street, there's people putting their money where their mouth is. And not in six years, it's happening now, creating jobs. We have heard a union leader announce with a straight face that the home, the base, the home place of our convention center, our biggest hotels, our famous Reading Terminal Market, our world-class Chinatown, our historic district is desolate, and it's dangerous. Creating a division between a major union and the citizens who get up in the morning, head over to that area, to Market East, to Chinatown, to Wash West, and he creates a division between these citizens who live and work hard there every day to meet the challenges of city life. We know what it looks like there, and we still show up for work. We still show up to shop at the Reading Terminal Market. We support this. That is a cost that's not in any of the studies when a union worker stands up and says that a place is... There's a blank hole, country. He's telling it, he's saying that. He's saying bad things happen in Philadelphia. We live here. We know better. Chinatown is currently united, but if 76 Place backers succeed... I really hate to say this, but I've seen it happen with the casino bucks and elsewhere. If the 76 Place backers succeed, how will Chinatown bridge the gap between those in its community who folded and who took the CBA cash and those who resisted and who were left out of that? And we've already heard 25 times today that it's not enough money anyway to solve the problem. I have not yet heard anyone connected with this project say what an incredible economic engine Chinatown is. How much they make a year? 500 bill? A bill? Who knows? I'd love to hear that number. We haven't heard it. We just keep hearing a billionaire... A billionaire this is going to give us a billion. That's a cost that's not in any of the studies, that division that could happen at Chinatown that's already happening between the Black and the Asian communities in Philadelphia. That's one of the costs we've heard, and there's so many more that other people have said better than me and that will say better than me afterwards. We already know 76 Place Arena will bring no real economic benefits to our city. Even the studies they paid for bear this out. The math has been done. The time is now to continue doing the complicated work of reviving Market East and Chinatown and not looking at this billionaire as kind of some sort of savior. Is Council President Squillor the mayor here? Okay, yeah. With greatest respect, Mayor Parker, Councilperson Squilla, do not try to play... And I say this as a person who was born in Philly 70 years ago. Okay. Councilmember Squilla, Mayor Parker, do not try to play poker with these oligarchs. They hold all the cards. They've already changed the deal. You're gonna... I don't want to lose my shirt just because you have hold of it for a moment and you want to make this guy happy. They changed the deal multiple times. Don't try to play poker with these guys. Work with the community that's here asking you to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Would Michael Seal, Pierce Jordan, Kate Carey, and Craig Heim please come forward? Again, that's Michael Seal, Pierce Jordan, Kate Carey, and Craig Heim. Please come forward. You will each have two minutes to speak.
Please state your name for the record and proceed.
Hi, my name is Mike Schul. I live in the 3rd District, West Philly. Thank you, Councilmember Contier, for your support. I'm really nervous. And I want to thank everyone who's come here to speak. I know how much courage it takes to come here. And I know there are a lot of people that couldn't make it. So I'll do my best. I have been car-free all my life by choice. I've chosen to live in West Philly, very close to the L, and I love Philadelphia. It's such a great, walkable city. I take SEPTA everywhere. We have a great Chinatown. We have a great sports complex, and we have a great subway line to connect them. I would hate to ruin all of those things by building something we don't need in a place that is already amazing, wonderful. I sang with Mendelson Club way back to celebrate the 125th anniversary of Chinatown. We got to sing in Chinese. We sang "The Yellow River Cantada." And it was such a great experience. It made me so proud of my city. And it was only a few years later that they said they were going to build a stadium there. I thought, what an insult. What a slap in the face to the people of Philadelphia. And then they said they were going to build a casino. I am so glad we stopped those things from happening. I can't believe anybody buys the story that this arena is going to bring business to the neighborhood. I was at the Convention Center for an event recently, and we were hungry. We wanted to eat lunch. And I knew we were on our... We could go to Reading Terminal, but those buildings are built like fortresses. They're designed to keep visitors in and neighbors out. That's enough. Thank you so much. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your testimony. Please state your name for the record and proceed.
Good morning, everyone. Councilmembers and everyone else. My name is Kate Carey. I'm not part of any organizations. I'm just a regular person. I am a lifelong Philly resident. My family has lived here for generations, half of which have been firefighters, paramedics, and the other half, union truckers, HVAC technicians, and mechanics. For the last seven years, I live in District 10, which, for those of you who don't know, is very far northeast. So if you're wondering So if you're wondering why someone who lives so far from the proposed site of the arena is so opposed to it, it does affect all of us. On my -- and it is a bad deal for Philadelphia. On my hour and a half each-way ride on SEPTA to my job in Center City every day, I often overhear neighbors on the bus discussing their concerns about this arena as well. Whenever there is a marathon on the parkway or a street festival in the Gaborhood, the traffic congestion, SEPTA delays, and rerouting are already so frustrating, not to mention that the city's only trauma-one center is mere miles away from the proposed site. And when every second counts in an emergency, this traffic added will cost lives. Giving the proposed Sixers Arena a property tax break when our transit system is already struggling to the point of cutting routes and increasing fares, housing prices are climbing, and public schools are barely hanging on is -- sorry, I'm a little nervous -- is a waste of our resources, frankly, and I'm not willing to sacrifice another vibrant community of hard-working people for a bunch of billionaires. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Please state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony.
Good morning. My name is Craig Heim. I'm a Sixers fan from the amazing community of East Mount Airy in the 8th District, where I've lived for 25 years. Over the past several months, I've spoken with staff from all 17 council members' offices and shared my strongly-held view that the Sixers Arena absolutely should not be built in Center City. Without exception, these staff members have been professional, friendly, and responsive in recording my opposition. I contacted all the council members because this issue is not about one community or one council district. It's about the entire city of Philadelphia and what it means to be part of a neighborhood. One Philly, a united city. It's a citywide concern, and as an elected official, I wanted to make sure every one of you had my input. The 76ers' own economic study make it clear that this project would profoundly negatively impact the Chinatown community. People's homes and businesses will be ruined for the financial gains of a handful of billionaire investors. Support for this proposal is callous approval of the destruction of a vibrant Philadelphia community. Don't let it happen. One of the economic benefits cited in the 76ers' study is, quote, "increased competitive pricing of stadium suites in a city with two arenas." How far from the reality of everyday Philadelphia citizens is this finding? In a city where the vast majority of residents can't afford to go to a game, why should we care about luxury suite prices? The idea that Chinatown is the only viable location in Philadelphia for a new arena is absurd.
Thank you for your testimony. Would Liam Vu, Jack Cook, Megan McKernis, and Emma Thorpe please come forward? Again, Liam Vu, Jack Cook, Megan McKemus, and Emma Thorpe, please come forward. You will each have two minutes to speak.
Please state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony.
Hi, my name is Lynn Vu, and I am the president of OCA Advocates Greater Philadelphia. We are the local chapter of a national Asian-American civil rights organization that's been around for over 50 years. Our organization has witnessed Chinatowns and similar communities across the country threatened and decimated by the construction of sports arenas. These projects often promise to create jobs and boost local businesses, as we've heard, but in reality, they represent the death rattle of these communities' history and cultural identity. Take, for example, the Capitol Arena in Washington, D.C., which opened in 1997. This arena led to the collapse of D.C.'s Chinatown, displacing long-term residents and small businesses, and eroding the community's cultural identity. Residents described the impact as devastating, watching as promises of economic support for small businesses failed to materialize. I was there at that time. Similarly, in Brooklyn, the construction of the Barclays Center disproportionately forced out communities of color. Rent increases primarily affected lower-income residents, while higher-income individuals could afford the changes, leading to significant displacement. Now we face a similar threat with this proposal. Economic studies consistently, like you've heard, show that reports that sports arenas do not increase tax revenues for their local areas. If more money is needed, the 76ers developers have stated that even the community benefit agreement will not increase. OCIGP hasn't seen no efforts from the city or developers to address community concerns about displacement, cultural preservation, or the everyday impacts of construction on traffic, SEPTA transit schools, churches, et cetera. From what we have seen so far, this arena will devastate Philadelph's national, recognize one of the oldest Chinatown in the nation, just as the Capitol Arena destroys D.C.'s Chinatown and the Barclays Center that forced out communities of color in Brooklyn. Thank you.
Please state your name for the record and proceed.
My name is Jack Cook. A lot of shot clock violations tonight here. I live in Philly. I'm also a business agent for the Elevator Constructors Union Local 5. There is nothing more important than having a job to support your family and the dignity of work. This arena will provide jobs during the construction, after the construction is finished also. This arena will spark growth on the East Market, which desperately needs it right now. Within this growth, there will be more jobs and more end-of-the-day -- and at the end of the day, permanent jobs. The city will have more restaurants, bars, places to go. Nothing worthwhile is easy, but at the end of the day, this will definitely be a positive for our city. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Please state your name and proceed.
Hello, my name is Megan Malkemus. I'm a constituent of Councilmember Squilla, and I'm a social policy student here in the city, and I'm here to express my total opposition to the construction of the 76ers Arena. As a taxpayer in this city, I'm strongly against $400 million of tax revenue that could and should be invested in the youth, families, and workers of this city being wasted on an unnecessary expenditure that has been met with such outspoken opposition. I'm also strongly against the advancement of any development project that threatens to decimate up to 50% of small business and its surrounding communities. As someone who arrived to Philadelphia in part because I can no longer afford to live in my hometown of Boston, Massachusetts, I'm all too familiar with the failure of community benefits agreements to prevent displacement and result in substantial benefit for the residents most impacted by gentrification. As someone who relies on SEPTA for transportation and has been a retail worker in Center City, I'm also all too familiar with how SEPTA disruptions interfere with the economic stability of low-income workers who risk workplace penalties with SEPTA dysfunction as it impacts their commute. And lastly, as an emerging policy professional who intends to remain in this city, I believe that when presented with such clear opposition to a project that data indicates will harm its constituency at the level of housing, employment, and health care, just to name a few, that city council should act in the interest of its community stakeholders and the community members of Chinatown who are at risk of displacement over the interests of a handful of billionaires. Thank you.
Please state your name for the record and proceed.
Thanks. My name is Emma Thorpe. I have been a resident of Philadelphia for 10 years. I grew up in the D.C. area, and every time my father visits, he is just overwhelmed by the amount of small, independent businesses we have in this city. Unique -- Philly is really unique in how many small, locally-owned businesses we have. If my father wants a cup of coffee that isn't a Starbucks, he has to drive 20 minutes. Here, I can walk five minutes from my apartment and run into three or four locally-owned coffee shops. I remember, you know, when I was a teen, you know, being a bad kid, going around D.C.'s Chinatown. By that time, I was old enough -- by the time I was old enough to do that on my own, it was completely stripped of any kind of local character or local business. Every business was a chain. Every restaurant was nationally-owned. Here, if you walk down D.C. -- or Philly's Chinatown, it is unrecognizable from D.C.'s Chinatown. There is dozens of independent businesses on every block. There is, you know, you could eat out every single night for a week and still be going to independent, locally-owned businesses. I was very concerned by the impact study that said 50% of businesses would be negatively impacted by that, and we've heard at this hearing today that, you know, over 150 local Chinatown businesses are opposed to this plan because they worry that, you know, it may close their business. And that is something that if we, you know, if the arena goes through, we would see, you know, a pop -- we would see that the businesses are being negatively affected, and we would lose what makes Philly so characteristic and so unique and what other cities have mourned losing. In addition, I just also wanted to speak how wonderful it is, how many union members we have. I think unions and construction is the lifeblood of any city, and it saddens me that we are seeing it as unions and constructions versus the people and culture, when really it should be all of us versus the billionaires that have depleted the city of its resources, making it impossible. Making it so the city doesn't have money to spend on publics and hire unions to repair things like parks and schools, and in fact, can't even pay the bills to the contractors that have been hired for those things. So yeah, thank you so much for your time. Go Philly!
Thank you for your testimony.
Would Sheri Cohen, Ben Felicia, Lillian Austin, and Yvette Young, and Roxanna Teginia please come forward? Again, Sheri Cohen, Ben Felicia, Lillian Austin, Yvette Young, and Roxanna Teginia, please come forward. You will each have two minutes to speak.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record and proceed.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Sheri Cohen. I'm a community activist, attorney, and I live in the 8th Council District. I came here to speak against the arena legislation and to urge you, do not sacrifice Chinatown on the altar of billionaires. I have three points. Number one, history. Philadelphia's Chinatown, one of the last surviving Chinatowns in the U.S., was founded in 1871, over 150 years ago. Last year, it was named as one of America's 11 Most Endangered Historic Places by the National Trust for Historic Preservation to, quote, "raise awareness about the threat facing one of our nation's greatest treasures." This national organization recognized the threat to Chinatown's existence caused by 76 Place. Do you? In 2026, the 250th anniversary of the founding of the U.S. will be celebrated as One Philly -- oh, I'm sorry. Will we celebrate as One Philly, the watchword of our mayor, or will we no longer be One Philly because we have consigned one of our nation's greatest communities to displacement and decimation? Number two, housing. While we debate whether one team should get a new home when they already have a home, isn't the more important question, what are we doing about all the Philadelphians who really need a home? We have an affordable housing crisis with more than 70,000 households on the waitlist for publicly subsidized housing, and about 50% of renters are cost-burdened. Number three, One Philly. I dare say that most of us are still reeling from a certain election that took place two weeks ago. That was when an orange billionaire used the familiar playbook of divide and conquer and won. Let us now not let three billionaires, I don't know if they are orange, divide and conquer us. As our mayor says, let us be One Philly. Let us stand together in solidarity with Chinatown today and when Chinatown celebrates the 250th anniversary of its founding in Philadelphia. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Please state your name for the record and proceed.
Thank you. Good morning, council. My name is Ben Felicia. I'm a lifelong Philadelphia resident and the senior vice president of the Pennsylvania Restaurant and Lodging Association. The PRLA appreciates Mayor Sherrell Parker's thoughtful and collaborative approach navigating conversations happening at City Hall around the development of a new arena for Philadelphia 76ers in Center City, and commends the mayor for her diligent leadership. Mayor Parker's stance on keeping this iconic team in Philadelphia is not only a win for the city's sports fans, but also a bold step towards driving economic growth and reinforcing the strength of the hospitality sector. Mayor Parker has been a long champion of hospitality, and this bold endorsement makes clear her commitment to our industry and her promise to attract more visitors to Philadelphia. Since taking office, she has made great strides to cut bureaucratic red tape, streamline services, and by forming the mayor's business action team, will make operating in Philadelphia easier and more appealing for our businesses. These actions reflect her vision of a city that is both economically vibrant and hospitable to operators across all industries. As this project progresses, PRLA looks forward to actively engaging with all stakeholders, including the over 80,000 service workers in the region, to ensure this development benefits both the local economy and the hospitality community, which is critical to Philadelphia's continued success as a premier destination. Thank you.
Please state your name for the record and proceed.
Hi, council members and fellow residents. My name is Roxanna Teginia, and I live in South Philadelphia in the 1st District. I oppose the arena plan as this would decimate today's vibrant Chinatown. And to understand a bit of what we can expect here in Philadelphia, I wanted to speak a little bit on the decision-makings of D.C. back in the '80s and '90s to see what is in store for Philadelphia. D.C.'s Chinatown served as a home and community hub for Chinese immigrants, reaching a majority of the neighborhood population, occupying 69% of the neighborhood according to the U.S. Census. However, D.C. government had different plans for this area. Despite calls from the Chinatown community in D.C. for support and community development, D.C. officials made way to build out a convention center, a commercial mall, and an arena, which sounds very familiar to our Chinatown area today. This resulted in further increasing property prices and displacing countless Chinese businesses and residents. By 2015, the Chinese population had dwindled drastically, with the 2020 census reporting only 18% of Chinatown residents being Asian-American. This marks the highest decrease in Asian-American residents out of any city in the United States, over a 40% decline. I bring all of this as an example of what we can expect with this arena. We can expect a disrupted Chinatown. We can expect a majority of its residents to be displaced because it's happened before. We've seen it in D.C. D.C.'s Chinatown exemplifies how poor decision-making from city leaders can result in a broken, fragmented community, sterilization of an important cultural hub, and a displacement of families and thousands of residents. So I ask you all, council members, to consider the long-lasting effects your decision will have on this already incredible neighborhood in Chinatown, and to stand with the majority of Philadelphians who oppose this deal. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
That concludes our witness list for today.
Thank you very much, council. We'll stand in recess until 1:30 this afternoon. Thank you.